Good afternoon. The vice president of the W B U session will begin now following immediately by the City Council meeting of August 7th, 2024. We have a brief couple of minutes. The two of your correspondents, I think, Kirk. Orders and second reading. We have one ordinance to amend as to maybe the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 15. Deal with construction, this is fine, section 15, 4, 120, and 1C. We have ordinances in first reading. One in ordinance 2, may I supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10. Vehicles and traffic, this is for some parking zones, uh, for handicapped persons on various addresses. Number two, an organized school approved a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the city of New Brunswick and Devon Street, Urban Reunion LLC. Then we have resolutions 1, 244. We will not approve amendment, amendment. Two, approve payments, right here, request the tax sales certificate. Four, approve a request prescribed for the request of the University. Five, approve a contract with Timo and the S A N. Six, approve amendment of resolution 022422, regarding state lab view. Seven, approve amendment of resolution 052414, regarding state lab authorities. Eight, approve a contract with the LLC. Nine, approve amendment of resolution 062369, which our property services in. Ten, authorization to apply an asset grant to support a virtual tackling program at the University Senior Center, Research Center, with the Amway Foundation and the Waters Times Foundation for geographic lighting and lighting. Eleven, approve amendment of resolution 122347, with the Pacific Company. Twelve, approve the law agreement in the Symmetrical Life Insurance Company. This is not for tone. Thirteen, authorized tax collector to track over payments in tax and utility accounts. Fourteen, approve request for use of city property requested by the Grace Kids Foundation. Fifteen, approve request prescribed for city reuse of city cycle requested by Progress Mason Works for PRs. Sixteen, approve request for use of city property requested by Lawrence University. Seventeen, approve amendment of resolution 02248. You approve our conversation to advertise for rehab relief and for next food for our own program. Eighteen, approve a contract with the Chicago Law Associates. Nineteen, approve relaxation of the city most organs requested by five construction company with the LLC. Twenty, approve release of performance guarantee to art design group and don't look at the LLC. Twenty-one, approve the life insurance bonus for 2024, 2025, for aid to assembly, the LLC, the same activity. Twenty-two, approve request for school closed requested by Lawrence University. Twenty-three, approve request for use of city property requested by the University Cultural Center. Twenty-four, approve relaxation of the city most organs requested by A Endurance, Air Force Center. Twenty-five, approve amendment of resolution 062478 requested by the Department of Engineering. Twenty-six, approve relaxation of the city most organs and temporary road closure requested by City of Earth's in. Twenty-seven, approve amendment of resolution 052465, change order number four with Sandra Núñez, do business as the more contracted owner. Twenty-eight, approve a order contract with the LLC. Twenty-nine, approve request for stadium funds requested by the Department of Health to manage the Morris O'Keeber Cancer Center. Thirty, approve chapter 159 for the insertion instead of New Jersey for 2024, it is a grant by the plan. Thirty-one, approve chapters 159 for insertion, Veterans County for 24, 2024, 2025, the municipal alliance plan. Thirty-two, approve chapter 159 for insertion instead of New Jersey for 2024, three acres rent. Thirty-three, approve chapter 159 for the insertion instead of New Jersey for 2024, it is a grant by the plan. Thirty-four, approve chapter 159 for 159 for the insertion instead of New Jersey for 2024, three committees. Thirty-five, approve chapter 159 for insertion, National Opioid Settlement Fund for 2024, opioid grant. Thirty-six, approve resolution to authorize removal of squad to bench construction at LLC. Thirty-seven, approve a order contract with enterprise automation in. Thirty-eight, approve request for use of city property requested by Timeless. Thirty-nine, approve resolution for acceptance of long-term exemption application for the Swiss Street, Urban Reunion LLC. Forty, approve request to reserve two parking spaces requested by City of the IGC University. Forty-one, approve request for use of city property requested by the University Cultural Center, or the two authorized professional lawyers services agreement, agreement in the City of Parkland LLC. Forty-three, approve a order contract with City Net LLC. Forty-four, approve amendment of resolution 02219, we will ensign this system, do business as first light coordination. At this time, we leave.
Councilmember Castaneda is absent. Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Here.
Councilmembers, Satorah Ludwig is absent. Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Council President Escobar.
Here.
Please be advised that the warning requirements of all public media has been complied with and satisfied in that any notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and content of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate voting board in city home, and has been transmitted to the local newspaper for the city of New Brunswick and the Public Administration.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I just wanted to recognize that today's National Purple Heart Day, and I would like to take this moment to remember and honor the sacrifice of service members who have been wounded or killed in the line of duty. May God bless them all.
Thank you. Move the events to the next point.
Second question.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yeah.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
All right, John, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments? Yes, now the president, the board of funds received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. We have the public hearings, we have now ordinance for discussion in second reading. We have ordinance 072401, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 15. Deal with construction, chapter 15, 4, 120, construction code. Section 15, 4, 20, construction permits and fees. We are dealing with section 15, 4, 120, and 1C. Do any of the council members have any questions or any comments on these particular ordinance? At this point, we are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time off. Any member of the public which wishes to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council.
Good evening, council. Charlie Cradaville, Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Just want to ask what the purpose of this legislation is, what's going to change?
Sure, council president, fees are no longer allowed on the uniform construction code. The state was recommended that we just do some new registration orders.
What kind of fees?
Was an expedited planner review fee and a special request for inspections on Saturdays and Sundays for timeouts, sudden normal work hours, maybe. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public which just want to address the council? See none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
So we have ordinance on first reading. We have ordinance 082401, is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, chapter 10, 20, parking, section 10, 20, 10. Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons. We are adding 90, Harden Street, North Hill Street, 140 Comstock Street, and 64, Madison Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down August 21st, 2024, 5:00 AM, St. David's.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember, Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
We have ordinance 082402, is an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the city of New Brunswick and 11 St. Street, Urban Reunion LLC, this is in reference to 11 St. Street.
I move the ordinance setting down August 21st, 5:00 AM, St. David's.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
Now we're going into resolutions. We have resolutions 1, 2, 44. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or any comments on the resolutions? Mr. Dominguez. And if you'll still give a bit about resolution 29, please. This is a nation of 169.
Sir, thank you, council president. So sometime last year, the fall, as part of one of our redevelopment plans, developer was approved for a building at the corner of Spring Street and, and Turgeon Street, where there's a currently existing, like a two or three-story parking structure. As part of that approval, they are seeking a tax abatement for 30-year long-term tax exemption to be able to effectuate or build the building. The current lot, as it is now, is not a revenue generating property, and it is part of 120, the 120 Albany Street complex, and so the, and it's on its own tax abatement as part of that prior approval, and which means it's generating zero dollars in revenue to the city. It has no annual value in terms of tax revenue. This is, this resolution allows the city council to entertain and authorize it to approve if two weeks from now it seems fit, that long-term tax exemption. Projected revenue would be about $1 million a year from that lot post-approval of the tax exemption.
Thank you. At this time, we are preparing to open the meeting to put a comment on the resolutions only. You have up to five minutes. One person, one, per person, one time off. Any member of the public wishes to address the council of these resolutions, please approach.
Good evening. Charlie Cradaville, Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'm interested in the opioid settlement funds, $646,000. What does the city plan do with this money?
Mr. Holder.
Right now, at this time, as this is part of the fudge assertion under receipt, there's no actual plans.
Okay. And, thank you, Holder. What, who's going to come up with the plan when, how can the public be involved?
Get you that information, Mr. Holder, when Mr. Julius comes back. I'll make sure that we're covered on that. Okay.
Move on to that tax exemption proposal. I just want to clarify, Mr. Dominguez said that the property generates no revenue currently because it's exempt under prior tax exemption, but isn't it true that the owner pays a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes? Is that correct?
Dominguez.
To clarify, yes, they do, but they pay on the revenue of the buildings that are attached to that deck. So the deck itself is not a revenue generating component, and so it's only the rents of the 20 Albany Street that factor into how much revenue is generated from that pilot.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Interesting. So when the original pilot was agreed to, they're just able to charge for parking and not factor that in at all in what they pay the city? Is that correct?
Dominguez.
I want to clarify. So if they are charging for parking, then that is some de minimis amount of revenue. I don't know if they're charging for parking, but the revenue, the bulk of it, is certainly from the building. There might be, okay, there might be like a grand or two potentially that comes out of revenue from the parking that they charge, if they charge for parking, which is not something that I know. It might be included in their rent, at which point it would be tied to the building.
Thank you.
There's like 20 signs out front of the deck, so it's, it sends mixed messages about whether it's public or private, you know, what the rents are. And I think there's an arrangement with the parking authority to use it at certain times, and also, you know, obviously the tenants of the building use it, whether or not they're paying to rent to use it, I don't know either, but I just wanted to clarify that. And I did want to ask, you know, if this is going to come up at the next meeting on second reading for the, or to grant the, yes, Spring Street.
Yes, decisions, there is issues to accept, navigation, then in two weeks we'll be answered about that.
Yeah, it's my understanding they came back to the housing authority to change the plans, and I just want to understand, is this application for the new plan or the old plan? It says in the resolution approximately 300 units, but I believe they've downsized it a little bit, is that correct?
Mr. Dominguez.
The original approval was for 340-ish, so 300 is the downsized version. And as an aside, 20% of it will be affordable, so it's 60 affordable units in the building.
Well, it's good that there'll be some affordable units in the building, and I, I do, do want to just clarify also, that's going to have to go back to the planning report then, right, since they changed the plan?
Dominguez.
No, the parking situation hasn't changed. They were approved for essentially an envelope of a box on the site. They locked the three floors off. They essentially created a disintensification, de-intensification of the building. Parking ratio is better, the building's less dense. We're not requiring them to come back, except within the box of what they were approved for, unless they're approved or it's signed by us.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, I'm going to ask about this Marizidi Falcon contract. This is on the same page, page seven, number 42. Can somebody explain the sort of permitting that the MCUA is asking the city to do, and why do you need a law firm to help you, help you with that?
Mr. Shem.
Yeah, this firm specializes in this area of law, and the MCUA does have certain requirements with respect to permitting and what can be put into their system. And through the course of time, we define necessary to have an expertise in this particular area from a legal perspective to negotiate with the permitting parameters, if you will. And this law firm will assist us in that regard.
Thank you.
So like negotiating with the MCUA?
It could be negotiating, it could be just making sure we have a proper legal form in our, in landing on permitting.
And, and what, what would the permit be for, for discharging wastewater?
Mr. Shem.
Well, after it goes into the, into this system, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else with a comment?
Hi, yes, there are no more. Let us speak on 35. I know the city, but I know we have honestly dishonest people, I have to say. We get a lot of grants, but I do not see the money going towards certain things. I know about three or four months ago, the city was awarded $342,000 for addiction. And to, to see this, it's, it's good to see it, but like I said, I gave you a very good idea due to where I work with helping a lot of people addiction do out here, but I would say some officers, like this one right here, what would it do, do, do to where, I, I help people with addiction. How many people did I help go to programs this year? Due to where, what? Like I announced at the other grant, what? It's all about what's put in your head. I've been taking OxyContin for over 20 years. I am not addicted, and how I've been invited to go to programs. Wow, how am I not addicted? How I teach others. Wow, if I sat home all day, I'd be in pain more. I'd be taking more pain pills, just like I tell them, ooh, you stay in the same location, you get high. What is your mind going to stay focused on? That's what I've been working with so many people, even many over there at Pittman Park and all, due to where, what, I was just up to the hospital with one the other day, I took him up there, talked to him and all. Like I said, I help people, but as I teach others, as I'm helping them, I'm helping myself as well, because like I said, when I'm doing something, it keeps my pain off of my mind. And I said at the last one, due to where, what? Give them something to do. I go to the heart production programs, I had one to go to Friday, due to on Eastern Avenue to go to. The object of this is where the same, it's not about going to programs anymore, like I had said before, even maybe with this amount of money, improve the other one, something similar to a teen center, and then due to where something similar to the center, you know, they have on Joyce Commerce Street, where it's a mental, that's more for mental, but I was invited to talk to people there as well. What do they do? They give the people something to do. What, exercise, cook, play pool, do computers, listen to, my, my, my number one thing when, due to where, what, how some people say, wow, how are you able to control these people? My number one thing, that's music. How I, I, I control them, due to where, how, how the ambulance will say, oh, back off, he's going to hit you. I said, no, he's not going to do anything. Like I said, I'm well-known with, with, how many, I, I, they can't say I'm not their guardian angels, many peoples I find. Like I said, when the Lord will lead me to, how everyone says, wow, perfect timing, time to use the, the ride there, to be there with someone. But like I said, my point is, give them something to do to keep their mind focused off of what their situation is. What, drinking, drug, like I told you, minus pain medication, please, I see you see that I'm a very healthy woman. What, I'll show you the records, what, due to, yeah, I'm taking more pain medication now for my injury in my arm, but wow, for me to go from 90 tablets of OxyContin down to 45 tablets in a certain amount of time. Doctor said, wow, I've never seen anybody like you before. Until I introduce, what do I do? You see me, I take pictures, I walk a lot, I paint pictures, what, I do things to keep it off my mind, and that's the number one subject, due to where, whether it's not about, some people will say, oh, you have to want to be, go, want to go get clean, to be clean. It doesn't work like that for everybody. Like I said, as many of them that I've been helping, due to where, going, going to programs, but see, the situation is, when you go to a program, due to where, keep you away from your location, what, where you were, with your situation, and wow, how many from New Brunswick that was here, and now over to Kirk Van Boy, clean for the past five, 10 years? That's the other situation. Did, did I go through the same thing, learn, learn also with my mom as well? Wow, getting her away before she passed away years ago, what? Get, get her away from the situation? That's the idea, and I, please, I hope the money would really be used to really help people, because honestly, I see it really getting higher and higher, the main comments without going down, and how many people you have down there, what, using drugs, what, all the needles that you keep seeing over at Pittman Park, due to where, please, do it, do it the right way. Distract their medicine, believe me, it works, like I said, 20 years.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on resolutions only?
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Michelle Jarvis, and I just wanted to come back off of 35, in regards to, to make that tone out here in Brunswick, in regards to the drug uses. I am across from our children, seeing what they have to see, witnessing what they have to witness, I am a lone life resident, always born, raised, here. So I would like to know what kind of placement is in for those, and I do in and understand that a lot of these that are here are not natives of this city. And I do understand, and, and it's a lot to house, and one thing or another, but something has to be done, because this school year is starting back, and it's a lot to see. The children being scared, walking to school and coming, and I know the officers, well, they know about, they do what they can do as far as clearing commercial through, it's not Pittman Park, it's really a cemetery, but we call it Pittman Park for some reason now. But, you know, I would like to see and know what is being done for those who have this, these addictions, alcohol, whatever it is, what's going to be done, because not about me, but about our future, which are our children, because they are ours. Just some feedback on that, thank you.
These parties, like it was explained before, on the 35, as a resolution, the plan is not in place yet, decisions to insert the, the grants into the budget of the city, but we will keep updating and see when it is that it's going to be done, and when you raise some valid points, so thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on resolutions 1, 2, 4, 4? See none?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
Before going to the public portion part of the meeting, I just want to give a few updates, based on last, the last meeting that we had. There were some questions about the loading zone on 7 Davidson Avenue, so this is the update. The loading, please. A drop-off zone was never intended to be a 30 minutes, which became evident quickly and rectified as a 15-minute zone. It is not a parking zone, as was used by many back then, including residents. Vehicles were parking for over 30 minutes instead of parking at neighbors, obstructing access for deliveries, trouble, and pickup, and most importantly, emergency vehicles. The 15-minute zone creates turnover, allowing for coverage usage, as stated above. In terms of the border department, the city border department is current, we don't require testing, and will be submitting compliance documents to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection in advance of the August 10 deadline. This information can be verified at the New Jersey Drinking, Drinking Water Watch website. In addition, the D U C R, we talked earlier about the last time, is on the city's website, and the new corrected printing one that we're going to send, will be mailed soon to the residents. That's all I'm going to say about that before. There were some questions about retirement, I mean, final retirement system, and all that, so for PFRS employees, there are mandatory retirement ages for which a PFRS employee can overpay into the pension system. This is the guiding process as it related to retirement. There are exceptions and specialty items in the law relating to PFRS employees. And then, as many of you know, last night it was national blackout, some cities, you know, had to cancel, including ours, because of the weather and for the safety, but even though it was canceled, we are aware that some neighborhoods continue to be sad, which was great to have it, and there were some great celebrations throughout the city, so thank you for those who break the rain and the thundering and everything else that was happening to ensure that the community continued to have a celebration. Any other comments from my fellow councilmembers? Will you make any comments? Yes, Mr.?
I'd just like to congratulate Lieutenant Johnson on the New Brunswick Parking Authority who is retiring. He was a really good person who worked there and everything, always had to, and hear about people and everything like that, so I wish him well in his retirement.
Yes, I concur. Anybody else in the council? Okay, at this point, we are going to open the public portion part of the meeting, as we initially do. This portion of the meeting, you have five minutes per person to, one time off. This is not a debate, but answer, a question and answer period, this is a comment period. So at this time, if any members of the public wishes to, where the council may comment, please come forth.
Good evening, council president, and council...
Good evening, Council President and Councilmembers, while Burton, seven Livingston Avenue, thank you for that feedback on the fifteen minute drop-off. I, my question this evening is, for the past four to six weeks, I have noticed men who look like bouncers, wearing khaki pants, black shirts, on the back, they say, who goes with city center. They have walkie-talkies and most recently, they are riding around on golf carts. I'd like to know who they are, what their responsibilities, can they approach citizens? What are they there for?
Okay, so that's part of the New Brunswick City Center, I will get in touch with the man, I got for you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Alina, I live on Delavan Street and I've lived in New Brunswick for about five years and I'm here to publicly voice my support for the Votes For All campaign. I was born in Russia and my family immigrated to the U.S. when I was four under refugee status and despite the fact that the U.S. was all I knew, when I turned eighteen, I was still a green card holder and I was not able to vote. My family struggled as a working class immigrant family and I have been working since I was thirteen. I was lucky to be able to go to college and from there, I went through the naturalization process and got my citizenship a year later. No taxation without representation is a foundational idea in this country and part of why the United States is founded, yet the tens of thousands of immigrants living in New Brunswick who are working, paying taxes, sending their kids to school, those who comprise the life blood of this community do not have a voice in the policies passed by their local government and I don't think that's right. I know what it's like to grow up as an immigrant, people assume things about your character, they tell you to go back where you came from, but if you spend years living in a place, you care about it and you start to notice how you can help make it better. The Votes For All campaign will allow the people who make up the city to make the city better through the electoral system. It's common sense. If you belong to a city that belongs to you, then you should get a vote. I hope New Brunswick will follow the lead of D.C., San Francisco and Oakland and allow any New Brunswick resident over the age of sixteen to register to vote for local elections. Our rights are not easily given to us and they can be taken away. There are efforts across this country to weaken voting rights. Expanding that is a huge step in the right direction and for these reasons, I support Votes For All, thank you.
Hi, my name is Krista Cunningham, I live to seven to Hamilton Street, I've lived here about seven years. I'm part of the committee of petitioners on the Votes For All campaign and I just wanted to read out the initiative petition, just in case you guys haven't already heard it. We, the undersigned registered voters of the city of New Brunswick, New York City, under the power of initiative granted to the voters of the city of New Brunswick by NJSA forty colon sixty A dash twenty-four, hereby oppose the ordinance, propose the ordinance attached here to its appendix A and made a part thereof, if this ordinance is not passed by the city of New Brunswick within the time prescribed by NJSA forty colon sixty-nine A dash one eighty-four, that's, the undersigned voters demand that the same piece submitted to the electorate for vote in the next general election in accordance with NJSA forty colon sixty-nine A and one ninety-two B, but the question to be put to the voters in this matter. The question is, shall all individuals, regardless of immigration status or citizenship for sixteen years of age or will be sixteen years of age, honorable for the next local election, have resided in the corporate limits of the city of New Brunswick for a minimum of thirty days immediately preceding any local election, be eligible to register to vote and if so registered, be eligible to vote in any election? So the reason I'm passionate about this is, like I said, I've been living in New Brunswick for seven years and I've had the opportunity to come in contact with both the documented and undocumented community in New Brunswick and they're very passionate people, they deserve, they pay taxes, they're in our job, they're in our school, they're important parts of our community and they are treated as not even second-class citizens, particularly undocumented individuals are treated as third-class citizens. They are pressed by landlords, police and, you know, they deserve to have a say in our democracy. I think it's very important to address some of the systemic inequalities in our cities to allow these people to be a part of our democracy. But yeah, so I've been, I've been going around collecting signatures with many of my comrades, I've walked over seventy-three miles of New Brunswick collecting signatures and they have, I've collected, I think we've collected about three hundred signatures of people who care about this and who want to, this to be a part of the law. So I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for all the three hundred people who want this. So as the city council, I hope you consider this ordinance and consider the fact that it is best by that your voters, these are all registered voters, right, and many of these voters actually voted in the last election. So, you know, these are actually the people who voted for you and voted in you into your place of power, so please consider that, you know, what we're asking for seriously. Thank you.
Yes?
Hello. Hi, my name is Yoshi, I'm based in New Brunswick, corner lane, Princeton, New Jersey. I saw an article, I think it was published July fifth, tapping into New Brunswick, I was here before that, if it was announced at the New Brunswick City Council meeting, but I believe Keith Jones, in charge of the social services for like, the services for the most vulnerable households population in New Brunswick, had this proposal of, what is it, two ordinances that would supposedly streamline the services provided to the most vulnerable among our community members and I'm just here to kind of, you know, follow up and see if there had been any further updates on when we might expect to see or read this ordinance and then, you know, give it like due consideration and discussion.
Well, that was mentioned in one of the meetings that we had, it hasn't been presented to us, I think that they just mentioned that they would like to work on something like that, so I haven't heard anything from them. So at this point, I don't have anything to add because like I said, it was just mentioned, you mentioned it when he was meeting the board, that it was something that they were considering, but at this time, it hasn't come to us, we haven't received anything yet. So I'll follow up and see if they have, but as of now, we have not.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Michelle, citizen, employee, apartment, the fire department tonight, this coming September marks the twentieth year anniversary of the death of Deputy Chief James DeHern and the local seventeen and two seventeen, we have a fundraiser, we are selling T-shirts and one hundred percent of the proceeds go to the Mid-Atlantic Burn Foundation, as if you know Jimmy D or his daughter who just passed, I guess recently, they're very active in the burn camp. So we will be selling T-shirts, the T-shirt prices are thirty dollars and one hundred percent of the proceeds go to the Mid-Atlantic Burn Camp. If anyone that's not an employee or would like to purchase, we have, it's all around social media, but if you wanna stop by the firehouse any day between six and seven, you can place an order, cash or check only, but there will be someone there until the fifteenth of August between six and seven and that's all that I'm here during the day, but like people go to work, if you wanna spread the word, you can pop in on your way home from one to six to seven.
And the firehouse are using ready?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council at this time?
Thank you. Yes, Daniel Moore.
Of course, I would just like to say, thanks, thank you, Mr. Fleming, once again, for helping me out in the hallway, when I did drop my stuff, I bless you for helping me pick all of it up, like I said, sometimes it's not easy, but I, I'm gonna show you, like I said, when I keep my head clear of doing things, how, before certain times, how, like I said, this is what the type of photography I used to do and you, you always, you already seen my artwork, pre-deartwork I do, where I donated to a police officer, honestly, I have one more to donate, but like I said, I'm just getting tired of New Brunswick Police Department and you, some of you no good councilmembers, not taking matters seriously. Now I do, I, I, I don't see Ms. Suzanne Cora Lovewin present, this is the second meeting, I wonder why she is avoiding, due to where, like I said, I am gonna use her case against with mine, with, like I said, racism, due to where she wasn't put in handcuffs and now that I'm finished with my case with Christian Rodriguez, due to where, like I said, I treat anyone equal, no matter what race, creed or color, but wow, out of all the charges that he has hitting on police, on police officers, what, what, he only gets fifteen days, time, I dare the county to release him, due to where what, he's an illegal immigrant, due to where you do not treat people equal, what, how many do I tell, I love them every day going down French Street? How many do I help and now how many do they help that's helping me, where I pay, due to where I carry stuff around for me? Wow, oh, it's the, the, the cost of transportation for me now, what, two hundred and fifty dollars, due to where you know I used to walk, but like I said, wow, on five pain medications for the injury that New Brunswick Police Department caused to my shoulder, wow, a hundred something dollars a month, wow, you know that you never really saw me do my hair before, now what, two hundred thousand a month, due to where I have to pay someone to wash my hair, due to where, what, I still cannot move my arm, but I'm not even gonna take it off to show you how my arm is still hanging off, it's been over six months, but like I said, now you will see the progress, the reason why I didn't have the lawyer sign the papers in yet, that was because once that goes through, all my cases will go to the county and like I said, I want to finish with Christian Rodriguez, but now we have our internal affairs here, who also is a very dishonest liar protecting his officers, saying, oh, how many times did I report to him that, wow, please tell your officer to stop following me? Now, I don't wanna put Mr. Mitch into it, but yes, out of, due to where New Brunswick has three vehicles, white vehicles, for the past year and a half, following me, I would show all the evidence in court, my lawyer said, I said, wow, this is all about hate, this was all set up, I said, it's the heavy attack even over there, do I got the evidence? Yes, I do. What, lawyer said, oh, you gotta prove that hate, oh, there's no problem with me proving hate, how many times, what, what police, what, what, J.T. Miller, goddamn nephew, said he was falsely arrested, what, then you could, you congratulate someone like that, due to where he was never arrested, the damn charter dismissed? Now, is there anything going with my son, 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 again, please, I'm not going no less than five million dollars for both cases, with officers lying on me, where I have you with your own goddamn body cameras and like I said, once I get situated, where I have so many cases going, oh, it's gonna go to the news channel and now, like I said, for body cameras, I don't wanna put Mr. Mitch involved, but June, when I said, do police cars got trackers on him, he's right here with me, with the train station, oh, how many, how many police cars keep coming around me, coming, coming, coming around me and yes, they got the date and time of each, each, each one of them, but please, why do you keep damn following me? Did I, did I prove a point yesterday? Thank you, you say it's not on the tracker, then tell me why do I, I had my tricked you this the second time, not the first time, I put it on my phone, had too much, said, oh, I'll be right there to pick you up in five minutes, wow, how many damn police cars follow me just to see who I was in a car with? Please, like I said, you will be paying a price and I'm not going out cheaply and like I said, with all these damn officers when I'm in a vehicle, I already showed you last, last, at the last meeting, time, date, twelve forty-seven, another one, twelve forty-seven, another one, twelve forty-seven, what, then this other one I'm talking about, where he worked with the Board of Education, twelve forty-nine, they're all dated, twelve forty-nine, what, another one, twelve forty-nine, twelve fifty, and you're gonna continue to say that my phone is not on no tracker? Please, get ready to pay because I'm not going no cheaply, due to where all the hate and harassment from you councilmembers and this racist-ass police department. Thank you.
Good evening, Charlie Cradville again, I have a document for the council.
Thanks, I just wanna start by saying to Ms. Jarvis, thank you for your service, I know
that in some communities, being a crossing guard, you only have to worry about the cars and the pedestrians, but here in New Brunswick, there's a lot more to deal with and I know it's not an easy job, so I thank you for what you do. Also, wanted to ask, is the city still up a contract with Show and Tell Media LLC for public information services?
Continue, Mr. Cradville.
I asked a question, Matt, in front of me.
Do you know the process, I'm taking your questions, you know, I answer them now.
So you no longer answer questions?
Do you need me, when I said, we go through this every time we meet, okay? If I know, if I seen team that I could answer that question, I will. If I think that is not, we be able to answer that, which I will, so it will be under my, it will be under my.
Okay, you were just remaining silent, so I didn't know if you'd heard me.
And I, yeah, and I.
It is astonishing to me, it is astonishing to me that we spend so much money on public information professionals, we've got the M V P D P I O here, the city hall has two P I Os, Show and Tell Media, I believe, is still being paid for their services, but the city still could not put out accurate information about yesterday's National Night Out celebrations, but you know that there were some, but you wouldn't know that if you believed what the city said on Facebook, on Twitter, on Nixel, you would have incorrectly believed they were all canceled. We need to do better, I've offered to meet the city government about transparency issues, but the city has refused to even meet with me. If you're gonna refuse my help, you need to do a lot better because the public deserves not to be misled by their own government. I will say thank you to Councilman Ferguson for putting together a great event downtown last night and I understand Cheryl Smith also did a great event and wanna thank her for that. I just wish it had been properly advertised and promoted instead of the misleading message that was put out without any kind of apology or correction, let's do better. The council president, this body's also been downright obstructionist when it comes to certain sensitive subjects such as the water utilities' recent violations, I wanted to share the, the proof with you that the city did not submit a lead service line replacement plan when it was required to and now you can see that for yourself. I had asked a number of questions, you'd promised to respond to regarding the error, the compounded error of sending out an outdated and inaccurate letter from Mayor Cahill along with the required notice of that violation. I'm told this mistake's gonna require the city to send out new water quality reports to all water customers. I had asked, who was responsible for this error? What is the cost to the city to send out the corrected report? Do you have those answers for me?
No, I don't.
When can I expect those answers?
I know you asked those questions already of, to our public information officers, so we have them, so I'm hopefully, hopefully, he will answer those questions for you.
Yeah, I haven't gotten them, I've been asking, you, you told me you'd get me the answers and you don't have them tonight, so why should I expect that somebody who's not even in the room's gonna get them?
I think, still have them here.
Okay, so this is costing taxpayers money, these errors and, and no one is taking accountability for the errors, right? I, I asked who was responsible, the simple question, somebody made a mistake, let's own it, let's move on.
I said that, that somebody made a mistake, I, you already know the person, if it's an employee, I told you, an employee spoke hastily without, it was knowing my intention and you allowed, made a mistake and I said, everybody's allowed a mistake because we human, we make errors, right? In terms of the report, we knew, we told, we said in here, there was, it was in the report, we were excited, not because, because it was done late, right? We say all of that, we gave all that information, we admitted there was an error, we told you that we're gonna be, a new report is coming out with a letter from the mayor, we get, I just gave you enough, so what else do you want?
I wanna know who made the, I wanna know who made the error, that's a fair question.
What for? If it was an employee, then.
To hold the person accountable, you are, you're obstructing accountability when you behave like this and it's wrong. And I also asked, I, what?
You, I can't believe, you were the one asking for, you don't know the employee, it was already told that, what happened, it was an error, he, that's, he was an error, he was an error.
It's a fair question, who made the error, how much will it cost the city? Those are fair questions, if you can answer, get out.
How would this council, I can do that, I will try.
I also asked about reports, a firefighter was injured battling a fire on Rutgers campus on July eleventh, you said, you get back to me, I haven't heard back, is it true?
You don't, thank you.
Please don't disrespect me, we deserve better.
Same way, you can say who there is.
We, we deserve better. We, we deserve better. We've been covered up for people who are doing wrong.
You don't.
We deserve better.
Treat criminals like victims.
Excuse me, you're not even talking.
Where's Councilwoman Ludwig?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, all the excuses you donated for her.
Miss Danielle, you're not fine yet, you're gonna have to leave the room.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle Darbs again, I said I was across the board, thank you, um but I'm also a certified nursing assistant as well, over thirty plus years, I have a caring heart, I'm a long life resident of New Brunswick City and also know the real name that it used to be before, it was New Brunswick. Um I understand and over stand, some of you all lived here five, six, ten, eleven years, but while I'm standing back up here, thank Cahill, I just wanna know, the city of New Brunswick, we are filthy. Filthy, trash, shaw over the place. I've been living here all my life and this year, three weeks ago, I had the nerve to open my door and see a citation of my recycling can being in front of my garage, first time ever in my whole entire life living here, a citation. Because it looks dirty, but when I need to go visit my mama up in Princeton and when I go through South Brunswick, East Brunswick, East Brunswick, they clean as I don't know what, but when I enter back home, it's filthy, how dare you give me a citation? It's filthy. My orange cans, I keep replacing my recycling bins because when your employees empty the trash, they slam the cans down and it's recorded and then break them and then I don't call them, I just go and replace them. Cause they tired of doing their job, they don't sweep up when they leave trash on the ground, they don't sweep it up. This, so there are some things here in the city, you know, that need to be addressed. I mean, I have to walk out my door and look at things, not only the homeless and worry about our future children, but look at trash all over. Yeah, I get out and break and pick up my own and I do that because that's how I was raised, wash down the sidewalk, that's who I am because that's who my mother, but why should I have to do that? I get taxes too, whether I'm across the border, C and M, it adds to it. You hire people, you, they get paid to do their job, do it. The scales are unbalanced.
What was your address, second street, um Ms. Darbs?
I'm nineteen Riverside, used to be one seventy six. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve, too. Lady, that was it now. Anybody else want to call there? See you none? You take a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Esteban?
Yes. Thank you.